Madam Chair, floor is yours.
All right, thank you. Good evening, the City of Boston zoning Board of Appeal hearing for August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three is now in session. The hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until March two thousand and twenty-five. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being recorded. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer a comment and the time for commenting, as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called, those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stembridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called or the meeting host will not know to call upon you at the appropriate time. Those instructions will be repeated throughout the hearing. All right, Mr. Stembridge.
Good evening, Madam Chair, present.
Good evening, Ms. Panato.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Welcome. Thank you. The floor is yours, Mr. Stembridge.
Yes, Madam Chair. First on the agenda, we have case BOA one four eight two one nine five. The address of twenty-seven Russell Street is the applicant and where they're represented, present.
Yes.
Hey, can you introduce yourself and your project, please?
Yes, this is Sarah Rich, the architect for the project at the Ritten Associates, one seventy-seven Milk Street, Boston. I'm here presenting twenty-seven Russell Street on behalf of the owners, David Goff, Jessica McBeverne, and the contractor, Mike Bishop. Let's see, I'm gonna have you scroll through a few different pages. I will, it's not in sequential order, but I'll tell you which page. We can start with the cover sheet. The scope of work involves an added shower to the master bathroom, which would result in a four-foot by eight-foot, one-story bump out off the rear facade. See the rear elevation on the A three sheet. The rear yard setback is existing, non-conforming. It's currently nineteen foot six from the rear yard and the rear facade is nineteen point six feet from the rear yard. Twenty feet is required. I will just make a note that the existing fence is thirteen inches within the yard, so meaning that the rear setback is further away from the house than the fences. Please refer to the site survey on the A five sheet. Okay, there's an existing vestibule that are also projects four feet from the facade. The face of this vestibule is fifteen point three from the rear, the rear lot line, and this new bump out projection will align with the face of that.
Okay, is it okay to pause and just ask the board members if they have any questions? You do only have one violation, so.
Okay.
Any questions from the board?
No questions, the plans are adequate.
Thank you. May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Sean Breen here with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. And a butters meeting was held for twenty-seven Russell Street on June twenty-second. Since then, this office has not received any letters of support or opposition. It is with that, we would defer our judgment to the board.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands, thank you. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one four seven nine zero eight two. The address of two Mead Street Court is the applicant and where they're represented, present.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Nate Bryant. Thank you so much for taking the time to hear us out tonight. Before I dive into the details of the plans, I wanted to call out one thing from the purpose statement as a relation to this project. As after we submitted the report and working with the ISD, we are not doing the extension of the entryway to the third floor. This is shown in the updated plans reviewed and stamped, shown here by the ISD on five twenty-five. The remainder of the project does remain the same, though. We plan on adding a dormer to the third floor, which is sixteen feet by eleven inches. For two purposes, one is to create a proper egress from the third floor from the existing window that exists today, as well as this is what's going to allow us to add the bathroom onto the third floor as well. And the remainder of the project is new sheetrock and flooring on both the second and third floors. Regarding the violations, you know, we believe that for the Neighborhood Overlay District, our project does not impact any sort of pedestrian environment as it stands, and it upholds the character of the neighborhood. The last two regarding the roof structures and the floor-to-area excessive ratio, this is related to the dormer that we plan on adding. This dormer, as stated, is going to allow us to put a bathroom in on to the third floor, provide the proper egress, and the this will add about five feet, six inches to the existing closet as it stands today to allow for the bathroom. That's on page sixteen, I believe.
Any questions from the board?
Is the dormer able to be viewed from the street?
In regards to the plans, if you scroll up one page to page fifteen, this is what it would look like from the front. So it's similar to our neighbors, I guess, if it regards to view from the street.
Yeah. No other questions.
Thank you.
May I hear, may we hear a public testimony, please?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Sean Breen here with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. And a butters meeting was held for two Mead Street Court on June fifteenth. Since that, since that time, this office has received one letter of support and none in opposition. With that, we would defer our judgment to the board.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I have no raised hands. With that, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval with provisos that the plans be submitted to the BPDA for design review with some attention to the proposed dormer's scale and form in alignment along with Plan Charlestown.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Next, we have case BOA one four four eight two four six. The address of twenty-four Common Street is the applicant and where they're represented, present.
Hi, this is Kim Perry. I'm the homeowner of twenty-four Common Street. My husband Scott Perry is also on the call. We basically just want to do a curb cut for our back patio to put a parking spot in there. We're not changing the look on Elwood Place. We currently have, you can see here on the right-hand side, that would be where the current road is, Elwood Place. And then our house is where the deck is. So essentially, we just want to be able to pull the car up into our back patio. We're gonna keep an existing fence there. We're gonna switch out the fence, but the fence will look the same as it currently does. We're not changing the look of Elwood or anything back there. We just want to be able to park at night. There's been a lot of parking spots taken away on the front side, on Common Street, in the train-filled circle due to, we actually don't quite know why. I think spots were taken away basically every corner, so we've lost three to four spots in the last year. And we have three kids and just like to be able to pull into our back patio and park late at night when we come back from sporting events and other activities.
Can you confirm, so there, there is no curb cut currently, correct? You're adding?
We're adding a curb cut. It's a current fire lane back there, so there's no current parking spots, so we're not taking away any parking spots. We would just like to add a curb cut in order to pull indoor, basically back, back patio.
But you're only creating, you're only creating one spot?
Correct, but we're not taking away any parking spots.
Well, so, yeah, go ahead.
And Google, Google Earth has a pickup truck in that, in that space currently?
That would be two houses down from us, so we are twenty-four Common, twenty-two Common Street has, I believe it's a two car park, or curb cut already there.
Is yours the white fence in the, like, the white fence in Google Earth?
No, are, like, a dark. You might be on Putnam, so it's, it's right behind us, I think, would be eight Elwood Place.
So there's no way to park a car currently in, off of Elmwood Way?
It's a fire lane, so you're not technically not supposed to park back there. People pull up and on groceries, but there's currently no existing parking spaces on Elwood Place.
And then there's a pole. Where is that pole? It looks like a telephone pole.
It's, it's, it's the telephone pole slash.
Utility or something.
Utility pole, yeah, and it's with this plan, so it'd be, you can see in the top of, where, so in the diagram on the screen, the online, it's right up there, so it's, so the middle right, the pole is in the outside. We had when the land surveyor came, we have enough space and doesn't affect the pole.
So it definitely, this would definitely require pick approval, because you are really close to that pole and potentially a line, a utility line, so that's the Public Improvement Commission. Yeah, it's just confusing exactly where you are on Google Earth, looking at the back of your site.
Let me go on my. So you're, you're trying to access from Elmwood and not from Common or whatever.
Correct.
Yeah, enough, yeah, from Elmwood, so, which is like a little alley.
Oh, yeah, so what you do is, I'm on Google Earth, so I can see it better on what you guys are looking at. So Elmwood Street, yeah, so.
So where's that, where's that pickup truck parked right now, next to a white picket fence and a, and a gray shed?
Looking here.
Can you help us with what number Elmwood I'd be referring to, so I understand where you are?
Yeah.
Just need to change this. Yeah, I see the picket, the pickup truck.
And it looks like it's behind this building, but it's, sometimes it's hard to.
I think I need to move the satellite. Okay, there we go.
Like, are you seven near, like, where, yeah, what number are we?
Yeah, okay, the white pickup truck, where do you see?
No, it's a black pickup truck, a white house, a gray shed, a white picket fence.
I won't let me go in that far to see. Scott, can you see?
Kind of have to, like, drop someone down and look over there.
I know, it's, it's just help, it's helpful for us to understand, like, where is it exactly?
Yeah.
Is it possible to share the Google Earth images that you're?
We can't share screens.
No, we can't. You'd have to go on Google Earth yourself and look at it, but it looks like.
Like, where are you?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at it now. I, I don't see any white pickup on the Google Earth.
No, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, with a, like, a dark-colored pickup.
Right, maybe it's bluer, right?
Yeah. Are you the brownish, like, fence next to it with the trees, like?
Yes.
So I see, I, sorry, I see that.
Thank you.
White pickup, I think, with the fence. That is.
It's not a white pickup, it's a dark-colored pickup truck, like, blue. It's a white fence and a gray shed.
So you're to the left of that, is what we're, we're just trying to orient ourselves. Where, where are you?
We are two doors down, so there's some trees that you can see a green, kind of a red, and then another smaller green. We're down there, they don't, does that?
To the right or the left?
To the right, from the view that I'm looking at, if you're looking from the Elwood perspective, so there's.
So there's like cedar-looking fence, that's not you? Is that you, the cedar-looking fence, or are you the one in front of, like, the basketball thing?
Probably the basketball thing. I don't, I need more, I think, to get.
All right.
There is normally a basketball hoop.
All right. I, I, I mean, I, I think from, I think because it's gonna go to the pick for review. I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's a backyard, it's, 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 it's not a necessarily something we wouldn't approve, but, but I do believe that having that, that pole and that utility is going to require pick approval for this.
Okay.
So I've answered my questions. It'd be helpful to know exactly whose White House that is. Is that, that's not, your house is not a White House?
Is the Sullivan's, so that is.
Twenty-two, I believe?
That's twenty-two.
So we are, if you're, and so there's Common Street. If Elmwood Street is behind you, our house, there's a greenhouse. It's two houses, but it maybe looks like one in the picture.
But if I'm, if I'm on Elmwood Street, so my view is of Elmwood Street, and on Elmwood Street, I see a White House. So if I'm standing on Elmwood, and I see a White House, are you to the right or the left?
We are, you're gonna keep going down Elmwood Street, so we would be to the.
We're to the right if you're looking at the White House from Elmwood Street.
Okay, thank you, that helps.
And we'd be two houses down, so it'd be the White House, and then there's essentially our fences, our neighbors look exactly the same, but we're the second fence of the wood fences.
Okay, all right. And the, and the circles on these plans denote telephone poles or utility poles, so you've got one right in, in the middle of your proposed parking space?
In the middle?
No, we don't.
What's, what's these circles denote on your plan?
Hi.
Where do you? We see several lights, like, public lights on that.
That's, that's the front of the house, so we're looking in, that's, that's the side of our, so we're looking in the back, like, right there, where it says number twenty-four. We're looking back here. See where it says deck? We'd be to the right of the deck.
Kim, I, I think you have a different view than I have, or maybe others have.
Oh, okay, I think, I think we can keep moving, and I'll go to the pick, and they'll sort out the lights and the poles.
Yeah, well, I just wanna, there is some opposition based on, you know, it being a small alleyway and whatnot, and so I just want to hear from the public and understand.
I was looking backwards. Yeah, I was looking backwards. Now I can see it, yes, so there is.
Those two lights, because I see a couple, I see maybe two other driveways there.
Do you mind scrolling?
There is a telephone pole there. I'm not sure the circle denotes it or whether it's further to the right. You know, the proposed spot would not interfere with it, but obviously, as you said, it would be, it would be somewhat close to it, so.
Yeah, I think that's what Public Improvement Commission will sort through.
So is there a certain zoning that we can't be close to a certain amount of space between, or they just need to approve it?
I, I, I think it's gonna just go to the pick to review.
Javier, is that accurate?
That, I'm not sure. I'll have to talk with the plans examiner. I don't see anything cited through that, so I think Jean's right of having this.
It's about maneuverability in and out of this space, which is not really our purview, but it is the purview of the Public Improvement Commission, so just flagging that.
And BTB has not weighed in, that I know of, to this project. So maybe, I, I don't think we have any more questions that we can get. Do we, do you know? I'd like to open up a comment. Jessica, could I? Yeah.
Right. Madam Chair, members of the board, Sean Breen with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. And a butters meeting was held for twenty-four Common Street on June thirteenth. Since that time, this office has received one letter in support and five letters in opposition. A majority of the concern does revolve around Elmwood Street, it being a narrow dead-end filing. This concerns regarding snow removal and how that would work. Also with a gaslight pole that, wondering if that's gonna have to be removed. And privacy as well for primarily eleven Elmwood, I believe, that cars' lights might be shining into the lower floor of that building. With that, we would defer our judgment to the board.
A few other raised hands.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan for City Council at large, Michael Flaherty. Just echoing the sentiments of the mayor's office, the council has received opposition, those five letters that the mayor's office talked about, the, the concerns that the council receives similarly echo those concerns. That being said, the council will go and reckon opposition.
We'll go to Melissa and then Joanne. Once I'm muted, can you briefly tell us if you're in support or opposition and give your name and address?
Hi, my name is Melissa Brennan. My address is eight Chestnut Street, so I'm behind Elmwood Street. I'm in opposition. I grew up at eleven Elmwood Street. My mother still lives there, so she asked me to write a letter on her behalf to explain that when we grew up there, we used to be able to park two cars at the top of Elmwood Street, because it's a very narrow street that can only fit one car, but then at the top, it gets a little wider by Chestnut Street, which is where I think you see that white pickup truck on the Google Earth image. About twenty-five years ago, the city put up fire lane signs and told us that we could no longer park there because it was a safety issue. So just thinking about the fact that we used to have parking there and now we don't, it seems that this would also be a safety issue. And the maneuverability that you mentioned, it would be like a ninety-degree turn to make the turn into the driveway from a narrow street, unless you back up into the spot, which again would then shine the lights, the headlights of the car upon entering and exiting into the very first floor of Elmwood Street, which is a building, a bedroom. And then there is the issues that we talked about, about how this would affect the street for snow removal, lighting, there's only a few gaslights on that street, so there's just a lot of questions, and because, you know, the city has told us before that parking's not allowed here, we just think it should, it should remain that way.
Thank you. Yeah, Joanne?
Hi, I live at eleven Elmwood Street. It's actually nine-dash-eleven Elmwood Street. It's not place, it's not court, it's street. But anyhow, I'm opposed to it also, again, being with what Melissa said, with the fire apparatus, you know, I mean, fire truck can't even make it up here. If you allow it, there's three other houses that live on Common, that are on Common Street, but have backyards on Elmwood Street. So if this goes through with the three other people that have backyards on Elmwood Street, want to cut the whole sidewalk up? So that's, that's my, that's a real concern that I have. Yeah, what's good for one should be good for all, correct? The one that already has the driveway, twenty-two Common Street Sullivan, she has way bigger property than, than Keith the Perry's have. She has, her backyard is totally different, and she bought that twenty, twenty-two years ago. That's how far long it's been there. I feel bad, but you bought a house without a spot. I mean, I have a lot of breathing issues and, you know, I'm not saying I can't even get a handicap spot on Elmwood Street because it's a fire issue. So, I mean, if anyone should get a spot, I lived here my whole life, I, I can't breathe, I can't walk up my stairs. So I, I'm just totally opposed to this. Elmwood Street was a little quiet street, and, and a lot of the houses on the right side are like in the historical foundation, they register, they got the plaque on when they were built. So it's gonna be more commercial, commercially, because if you like the Perry's in this, who's to say the three other houses on Common Street that have backyards on Elmwood?
Thank you. Thank you. I have no additional raised hands. Okay. Does the applicant want to respond to that?
Scott, let me take this. In terms of snow removal, I guess we hadn't thought that one through, but the Sullivans do have a snowblower, and I guess I can talk to them to figure out how they remove their snow from that back alley, being a fire lane. I know there, it's, the snow is removed because it has to be glued by the city. So I feel like we can shovel off the front or walk, just like people shovel off the front walk, we'd shovel off the back walk. In terms of cutting off the whole back sidewalk, there's twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four are the only ones that have a backyard. The other sides of us, it's a house, there's no yard there, so the only other person that would be able to cut up the backyard would be number twenty-three, whose name is Sue, and as I currently know, she's a single woman and is not looking to do that. I can't speak for her, though. So really, it would just be my back patio and the patio next to us that actually have a backyard on the backside of Common Street. In terms of safety, this is something we thought about. I mean, people drive up and down that street all the time. I think those white trucks you're seeing are actually people's construction workers, so if anything, I know people are driving up and down the street all the time, and we're just looking to pull into our back patio. In terms of lights, we would be perfectly willing to turn the lights off and keep them dim at night. I can talk to people across from twenty-two Common Street to see what they do when they pull in and out. But I know, you know, they have two or three cars parked there, back there sometimes. In safety, I have three kids, they're playing basketball, basketball out there all the time. They live in that alleyway, so if anything, we are very well aware of the safety.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Ms. Perry. Any other questions from the board? I can't see you guys, but hearing, hearing none, may I have a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion for approval, and I, I think the pick review will, will deal with whether or not this, the maneuverability and other issues are gonna be a concern. But, but I think from a zoning standpoint, my motion is to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mister, I'm sorry, Mr. Stembridge?
Yeah.
Sorry, Ms. Panato?
Yes.
The chair, I know, the chair opposes because this is the, this is not the backyard of everybody. It may be their backyard, but everyone else on the other side of Elmwood is, that is their front yard, and I guess that I don't, I have concerns about it being a very small street, so with that, the, the motion does not carry.
Just, just for clarity, what, what is the follow-up process for us with the pick or to pursue with the pick or just as a follow-up, knowing that you're not approving?
I will ask Javier.
Thank you.
Well, besides that, if the board wants to put another motion, they can. If there, if there's no other motion denied at this point, I'll leave it at that for right now. If there's another motion?
Yeah, we're not the pick, you have to follow up separately with them. All right, what about a, a motion to defer and to see if you can work this out with your neighbors?
We have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yeah.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
We can defer this to September twenty-first. That, that's still a subcommittee date on a Thursday.
Okay, thank you.
And in the meantime, yeah, I think, I think determining whether maneuverability is gonna be an issue and the pick denied anyways is something you can do in the meantime.
Okay.
Understood, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next case?
Next, we have case BOA one four four five five two nine. The address of sixteen Wing Street is the applicant and where they're represented, present.
Hi, I'm Jennifer DeBoz, sixteenth Wing Street. I've been fighting this battle since two thousand and fifteen. I'm seeking a curb cut out for a drive, a legal driveway. I have been parking there over twenty-five years, anyway, jumping the curb. So I applied for a curb cutout, and I was deferred. Um, so I applied for a curb cutout, and I was deferred because of the inadequate space, they say. Because I had a tree there and also I had a light pole there. I had the tree stump removed, but I was waiting to get approved from the board before I asked the city, uh, pay the city to have the light. Um, um, removed. I have um. Seeking support from the Highland Park Neighborhood Coalition, and they support me. And as far as I know, majority of my neighbors su- support me.
Any questions from the board?
Um, excuse, so the the city said that you need to remove the tree or stump, which you have to.
I had the tree removed, but I have to pay the city. I I don't, I'm sorry, the date is not on the paper, but I have uh that number control number. Where I have to have the city pay them to have it replaced, not removed, but replaced somewhere else on the street.
Re- relocate.
Relocate it is the proper word, yes.
Okay. That's the only question I have.
Uh, can you, can you tell me the dimensions of that driveway, the width?
The width, it's between me and my neighbor, I.
Of your.
I own, I own seven feet point eight of that driveway, and he own fifteen inches per two of that.
Okay, now I see your parking spaces. I mean, the parking spaces, yeah, are fine. I mean, there there is a um. There's also a a light pole too that would have to be relocated.
Yes, that that is correct.
Okay, so that also is gonna go to the Public Improvement Commission for their review. Um. But I think as far as zoning is concerned, I I don't have any questions.
Okay, with that, can I have public testimony, please?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Keisha Santana with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Um, in a Butters meeting was held on May third, um, where the Butters expressed general um support. Um, the applicant presented to the Highland Park Neighborhood Coalition on June thirteenth, where they expressed support as well. Um, there was only one, the direct butter on fourteen, that expressed concern over the driveway going into the next property, which the applicant did address. Um, and at this time, we would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve.
Uh, do you have any provisos about pick?
Um, well, I think that it's going to go to the pick anyway, bec- so I can say, you know, it's gonna get further review by Public Improvement Commission. Um, and they should consider relocating the light pole.
Okay, um, may I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Can I ask one question, please?
Yes, ma'am.
So do I have to approach them to have the light removed? I have to wait for approval for another board meeting?
That's a good question. Is that a, uh, Javier, do you know the answer to that as far as the pick part of this?
Uh, that I'm not sure. I don't believe Jean put a viso on that, but if. There's a light post currently in the way, I think it'd be possible to put a driveway in there right now. Is that correct?
I've been parking there with the light pole, but it would be much easier if the pole wasn't there, but I've been squeezing there for a long time.
Yeah, and and I think the Public Improvement Commission has to review this and approve that before you can do a curb cut. So I don't know the procedure for getting in front of the Public Improvement Commission, but but they will uh review it for maneuverability. And they are the ones that are allowed to sort of move things like light poles.
Yeah, you you may wanna return to them directly.
That's not, that's not our purview.
Yeah.
But what is the next step then?
You have to go to, you have to go to the Public Improvement Commission, and I don't know the process for that. You'll have to. Talk to the BPDA should be able to tell you that.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Next case?
Next, we have case BOA one four six three five three two. The address of three two five Thatcher Street is the applicant and or the representative present.
Mike, can you raise your hand if you're on for this proposal? Okay, they're on the panelists. You can unmute yourself, Stan.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm here for three five Thatcher Street, uh, uh, I think I worded it wrong when I applied for the application. It's an existing dorm, but it's already there. I'm not changing the footprint of the room at all. What it is, is the the sidewalks go up four feet, then it goes to a a shingle roof. All I'm doing is just pushing the sidewalks up four more feet, so there's a a headroom there, and putting the flat roof on there. It's not extending out one inch past where it was before, all left or right, there's no in- increase to the room size at all. It's only just adding headroom.
Okay. Uh, any question from the board?
No questions, plans are adequate.
Okay. Uh, with that, may we have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office likes to defer to the judgment of this board. Uh, we, the applicants circulate a flyer to a Butters within three hundred feet. We did not receive any letters of uh support or opposition. Uh, with that, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Next, we have case. Case BOA one four six two nine two four. With the address of twenty-five Burr Street is the applicant and or the representative present.
Yes, thank you, Cameron Merrill, Marilyn McGeeery, business address one hundred State Street, Boston, Massachusetts. Uh, a- at this time, uh, while we did have a very positive uh public process, uh, numerous letters of support from all the Butters, all direct to Butters, JP, zoning, et cetera. Uh, we did receive a note this week that uh BTD was concerned about fourteen point nine as opposed to eighteen feet on those parking spaces. Uh, frankly, the intention was just to make a straight drive into their garages where they have EV vehicles. Uh, so it really was not their intention to park there anyways, but they were asked to draw parking spaces on. Uh, but that being said, uh, the original plans didn't have parking. It was just the existing driveway that's been there since two thousand. Um, but that being said, we we do wanna try and iron out those issues with BTD uh to satisfy the board uh before we move forward and would ask to defer.
Okay, are you looking at a specific date or Javier, what's the earliest date?
Uh, we could do September twenty-first. If they need more time, they could be at October twenty-sixth.
Mr. Merrill?
Uh, let's do the October date because I believe we're gonna have to revise the plan to draw spaces with greater depth.
All right, with that, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. See you then.
Thank you very much.
Just a reminder, it's October twenty-sixth. Okay.
Wow, sorry, was it the September date or October twenty-sixth, you said, right?
October twenty-sixth is the date.
Okay, thank you, sorry I didn't hear, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one four five two four six three. The address of twenty-one Lawren Lane is the applicant and or the representative present.
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, uh, John D. Barry with the Law Office. Uh, at eleven fifty-four, eleven fifty-six door Chester Ave, I represent uh the owners Lee Shen and Samantha. And with me on this project is Douglas Ruther, uh, who actually created the plans. Um, this proposal is basically a proposal to create a second floor addition uh on the existing structure. There's no change in the current footprint. Uh, the proposal includes a roof structure modification as per the plans, which essentially. Uh, as part of the addition, they're looking to um. The roof structure is gonna slightly change and more so, they're gonna be adding solar panels to the roof. There's only one violation that was cited, uh, it is the rear yard uh is insufficient. It's a pre-existing non-conformance. Uh, whoever's in control of the drawings, if you wanna pull down to A zero dot D one, I think that that one right there. I think this best um can highlight to the board the the hardship or the difficulties with the site. Uh, as you can see there, the forty-foot rear yard setback uh ultimately lands. In the top quarter of the existing structure. Um, so in order to do anything at the site uh that we're requesting as far as the addition that, uh, we do need a re- a variance for that pre-existing non-conformance. Uh, we did have a a good community process. There was no opposition to the proposal. I'm as- I'm assuming that someone is gonna be here from the neighborhood, from. Uh, the Office of Neighborhood Services. Um, but with that, if I can just highlight, it's basically gonna be a renovation, um, a little minor remodeling inside. And really, the second floor addition is gonna allow for an extra bedroom and bathroom. The couple um celebrated a new child, they need the additional space. And with that, I guess I defer to the board if there's any questions uh with the proposal and and with um the plans.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
No questions, the plans are adequate.
Thank you. May I have public testimony, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of the board. Uh, as you heard from the applicant's representation, there was a constructive community process. Uh, where the uh proponent worked with a rear a butter on some concerns. Uh, they went on to meet with the Jamaica Hills Neighborhood Association, which voted not to oppose. And they ultimately received uh support from the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council. Uh, with that, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no raised hands.
With that, may I have a motion?
Um, I'll make a motion to approve with uh BPDA design review.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Have a nice night.
Next, we have two companion cases. First being BOA one four four eight seven three one with the address of one fifty Chestnut Avenue. The second being case BOA one four four eight seven zero four. With the address being one fifty-two, one fifty-two H Chestnut Avenue. The applicant and or rep- representative present.
Second is a raised, two raised hands here. Um, Grayson and Jeff, either of you on for this proposal?
Yes, I am. Uh, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um. Sorry, yes, one fifty Chestnut is here, and Jeff is also present, I believe.
Okay, can one of you walk us through?
Walk us through, with their voting, voting.
I'm Jeff, if you're on.
Join us panelists.
Uh, you can unmute yourself when you become a panelist, Jeff.
Unmute. Okay, I'm sorry for this. Like, okay, it might make, you can hear me now on this?
Yes, yes.
Okay, good. All right, these are, this is uh the suggestion of inspectional services. We we are combining these two cases. The reason is that they share a a property line and there's a relocation of a common passageway. Um, this is uh on a one-way street with parking on the opposite side, not on this side. The proposal for one fifty is to add a one parking space next to the house. Um, in the, on the side of the existing walkway, that's eight feet by eighteen feet. And for one fifty-two, it's to legalize two existing parking spaces that have been there for at least forty years and probably forty-five or fifty years. I've owned the property since nineteen eighty-three. And we have in this uh on these slides to illustrate um the locations and the each proposal.
Can you, can you let the ambassador?
Ambassador, where?
You're still on two devices.
Okay, uh, yes, this shows the existing conditions on the street, and there are, we uh kind of fourteen parking spaces available on the opposite side of the street. And we did a survey and found there are twenty-one dwelling units with uh no off-street parking. And in addition, the city of Boylston Street, which runs uh perpendicular, is going to have a parking, a bicycle lanes added. So there will be a reduction of of parking along Boylston Street, creating additional pressure on Chestnut Avenue. For this few existing spaces. This is also, as noted in earlier slide, very close to the Stony Brook MBTA station. So there there is a real, a big demand for parking.
So can you go to slide that shows the actual dimensions? And can someone just turn off the second device?
Okay. Okay, this shows the uh existing conditions. And with the one fifty-two is a property in back is on a flag lot. It doesn't have any uh really perimeter land except for the uh space in front. Where the previous owner apparently put in this this uh concrete flatwork driveway and. And one fifty was the house was built earlier in front. Okay, and this shows it photographically. And there is a a garden space in back behind this, so this is not just having parking and building behind it. There is a a much larger planted area behind the existing parking area.
So, so you're essentially doing two curb cuts for three parking spaces?
No, there's an existing curb cut now for one fifty-two, which the city issued in nineteen ninety-seven.
Yeah, so the, right, so there'd be three, there'd be two curb cuts, i- if this goes through, two curb cuts, three parking spaces. Um, which is a little bit of a concern. The the other concern is there's a street pole uh also. Can you tell us where that is?
Uh, yes, if you're looking on this uh plan, it's shown between the two curb cuts. Uh, and that may need to be relocated. We we had some preliminary discussions with Public Works. And they had indicated that that may need to be relocated, and we're aware of that. Um, also, i- the curb cuts are uh separated, and there is a relocated walkway. So this is not only a sea of parking. It does have a five-foot passageway with a three-foot walkway. And some borders separating the parking spaces.
Yeah, from a, from a planning perspective, though, we we care about the pedestrian environment. And that multiple curb cuts sort of interfere with the pedestrian, um, you know, sidewalk access. Uh, this is also, as you noted, you know, within a a few blocks of the Stony Brook T Station or whatever, the MBTA is right there. So it is sort of a uh a transit-oriented stop as well, which which we sort of tend to favor less parking. Um, so those are my comments. Um.
Okay.
You know, I I think, you know. You might relocate the walkway but not add a new parking space.
Okay, but these are two separate ownerships. That's why this, the, for one fifty, the proposal, which is illustrated in this magenta color, is to add one space for one fifty.
Right.
And the other two are existing. If one fifty-two is a four-unit property, four apartments. And there are two spaces in front.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, you know, I I see what you're doing, but I'm, you know, I I think that we are reluctant to add additional curb cuts for for one space. And and uh it just doesn't really fit within the context of this type of neighborhood, which is really a transit-oriented location.
Okay, uh, we if we could uh stroll ahead in some of the slides to show prevalent conditions, I mean, that it, this is all pre-automotive neighborhood. This is shows the relocated walkway and the existing spaces, which would be narrowed in size to keep the landscaping. Next to one fifty-four. next to one fifty four Chestnut. And we can go ahead beyond this, please, of the slides. And that's why their file concurs, this shows the existing condition now from the front porch of one fifty two, looking out to the street.
Yeah, and, and if I could add, I'm the property owner for one fifty Chestnut. We would like to do the projects together. So we use semi-permeable pavers, environmentally friendly, reduce street runoff. Install an electric car hookup. So we certainly have the neighborhood in mind as we think about this. It's very much so in our, in the approval of the street. I think we've got about twenty signatures in support of the notion and in support of the permit.
Okay, yes, if we could go ahead, other slides, there are a few other slides here just to show quickly. This again is, is shows some images of a reason why there's only co-refusal. The next one, please. Is for one fifty two. That's the existing of parking lot is an abysmal condition for one fifty two. So aesthetically, this would be a big improvement as well. And if we go on beyond this, we have two slides here showing in the immediate vicinity of similar conditions with curb cuts that are prevalent all throughout this neighborhood, Spring Park Avenue.
Right, the fact that it's prevalent doesn't make it a, a desirable condition from a pedestrian sidewalk activity. I think that's the, that's the concern from a planning perspective. Having all these park, you know, and pedestrians having to walk and watch for cars coming and going. That and, and the difference in grade, all of that is a pedestrian issue that we, you know, is part of our job to be cognizant of.
I would like to add also that on the other side of the street, there is an uninterrupted pedestrian sidewalk. So there are definitely options for pedestrians as well. And I appreciate the concern too.
Okay, and the following two slides also, please, the last two that we have. There's, there's one more slide showing, with other images, and we have twenty-two signatures of support from residents in the surrounding and neighbors. And we had, is I believe you hear in comment, a onsite neighborhood meeting and with the neighborhood council as well, we had meetings.
So maybe it would, sorry, maybe it would help to have a public comment and then circle back for you to respond to that. Yeah, so Jessica?
I have no raised hands at the moment. If Owen S is on, they can go ahead.
Is Owen S?
Yes, yep. Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process, as you heard from the, the property owners. We had constructive meetings. As they mentioned, they received many signatures in support and they went on to the JPNC, which also voted to support. Neighbors were really pleased to hear about the commitment to use permeable pavers as well as the commitment to make sure that the installation would be attractive to the broader community. With that, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
I have no raised hands.
Mr. Stembridge, do you want to read BTD's opinion into the record?
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
You have it, sorry.
BPDA or BTD?
BTD. They sent some recommendations, but not on every, on everything.
But this is the make a road one fifty, one fifty two, one fifty two H Chestnut, Chestnut Avenue, Wood nineteen. One fifty Chestnut Avenue works okay. One fifty two to one fifty two H also works okay, and the curb cut is already in place. Finally, there is no parking on this side of Chestnut Avenue, which is one way to make the BTD suggest.
Yes, the, yes, the PPDA recommendation that is concerning.
Yeah, if you want to read theirs, I just want to have both on the record, just so that we have that before people make decisions.
For one fifty Chestnut Avenue, the BPDA recommendation in reference to BOA one four four eight seven three one. The Boston Planning and Development Agency recommends denial without prejudice. It's a suggestion that the opponent consider relocating the walkway without the addition of a new parking space. For one fifty two to one fifty two H Chestnut Avenue. BPDA's recommendation in reference to BOA one four four eight seven zero. The Boston Planning and Development Agency recommends denial.
So with that, are there any other questions from the board? If not, can I have a motion?
If I may say one comment, please, if I may, about?
A final, yes, a final comment, please.
Yes, thank you. We were here about three years ago with a proposal where all three spaces were aggregated together. And at that time, there was a denial without prejudice and asked us to explore separating them. So that's why we came, this is a better proposal because there's no overlap of a third space. And the, the two existing spaces, as I, as I said, have been there for over forty years.
Okay, thank you.
One fifty two, yes.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion? Go ahead.
I'd like to make motion now without prejudice.
Second. Okay, Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
I, so before I make my vote, can I understand what is different that the two of you would want them to reconsider in, so that they can do something different with this D WAP?
I, I think it's just more an issue of, you know, allowing for additional curb cuts and parking. So one curb cut for one space is not something we typically approve. And, you know, and I think in, in locations this close to the transit lines, we are discouraging additional parking. And given that they have variances, it triggers variances. We have, you know, purview over that.
I'm not sure what, but if they, if there is some way they can take care of these concerns, then I'd like to, that's why I made the motion.
Good. Yeah, I mean, I, I hate, I hate. I mean, to continue a bad condition of front yard parking is not something that we, that sort of, I, I think we should be doing from a, from a planning perspective.
Understood, and I hate kicking this up to the full board, but where BTD is not concerned about this, I, I and the fact that they're not actually taking away on street parking because there is none on the side of the street. And it being very wide street, I have to oppose.
On the motion.
So we need another motion.
Madam Chair, I may suggest, if you think it requires a full board hearing, you could defer to the September twenty, the next full board, I'm sorry, September twenty-sixth here.
Would someone like to consider that motion?
Like to make a motion to defer.
I'm sorry, August twenty.
I'd like to make a motion.
Are you loading onto my August caseload? Good God, okay.
I'd like to make a motion to defer this case to August twenty, August twenty-ninth.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. See you then.
And, and, and just so we understand, what, what explicitly are we looking to do on the twenty-ninth?
You're re-presenting to the full board because the subcommittee is unable to come to agreement. So you're presenting the same case.
And, and just so you know, the BPDA recommendation is a denial. And so their recommendations are going to go to the full board as well.
Okay, yes, okay, that was a surprise to us, given that there are some curb cuts in, in single space parking being installed right now.
Okay, we're moving on. We're moving on. You can re-present at the next hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Then we'll move on to case BOA one four four two five seven five. The address of six, six forty-four South Street. Is the applicant and or the representative present.
Hi, can you raise your hand if you're on for this proposal? Oh, they're on the panelists. Um, you can unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear us?
Yes, go ahead.
Hello.
Hi, my name is Owen Riley. This is Darlene Donovan. We live at sixty-four, six forty-four South Street in Roselandale. And we have a proposal to widen the curb cut, the pre-existing curb cut, to allow us to use two parking spaces that have been there since the nineteen sixties. In fact, when we moved in, there were three parking spaces. And they were all covered with a broken tarmac and we replaced that with, reduced it. So we created more of a front yard than existed when we moved in. We did landscape it. We did put in stone pavers and a little decorative fence and reduced it to two. So what we are seeking is to extend the curb cut to allow these two spaces to be used. That's, it's that simple for us.
So just to confirm, with, with the existing curb cut, you are unable to use both spaces? You're not able to drive into?
That is correct. There is a curb cut, but our neighbor also has a driveway. And we, the curb cut is on our property, although the denial notice, I don't know why, it says it's, it's for his property, his use. It's, I don't understand that. It's on our property. But we are seeking to move that existing radius stone further so that we can park in both spaces that exist in our, in our property, not just one.
Well, we've gotten tickets for our car being in the space that's not near the curb cut.
Right.
So even, we only have one car.
Right, we, we've had, we've twice had a summons, tickets. We've, we've appealed both of them. In both cases, the, we've been told that's okay. In one case, they said it was improperly issued. And the other one said that, well, you can park in the space that has the curb cut, but not the other one. So we are wanting to have two curb cuts. We're not taking away any parking from the street. There's no obstacles in front of the building to be moved. And again, it's been, this, this has been used this way since the nineteen sixties. We're just trying to make it, you know, clear that we can use it and stop having to fight tickets.
Because it's one way.
Right.
This.
It's a one-way street as well.
And there's no parking on our side.
Right.
And, and how, how wide is this proposed curb cut?
It would be nine point five, nine feet, five inches.
So my project description saying you're widening, so the total width of the curb cut?
Would be the, the new one or the one that's already there?
It would be twenty-eight and a half width.
Yeah, which is a huge curb cut for two cars.
Yeah, that is, yeah, it says twenty point four.
Yeah, but my, my notes say twenty-eight point five two, and that's what I, I saw when I looked at the plans.
We don't even, if you look at the plan.
Yeah, the plans say twenty-eight point five. And which is, which is a huge curb cut.
Well, I think, I'm not sure how this, how the plan is drawn up, but our neighbors next door have.
The twenty-eight, yeah.
It's because there's a driveway.
That includes our neighbor's property.
Right, right.
Right.
Um, I mean, it's a similar situation as we had before. This is an existing non-conforming front yard parking, which is something we wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't approve going forward, but it's an existing non-conforming use of that front yard to be parking in your front yard. And the problem is this is going to, you know, exacerbate that condition.
What, I'm just curious, what about the, the grandfathering clause? We have, we can, we have one affidavit in, in the record. And we can, we've been trying to get other affidavits and evidence from prior owners that can confirm this has been used for this purpose. And we have a photo, a date stamped photo showing that it's been used prior to the change in January nineteen eighty-two. Does that carry any weight?
Uh, I don't know. I don't, I don't know the answer to that question.
The section eight point six clearly says you can, you can show pre-existing conditions.
You, you can use it, you can use it as is because it's a pre-existing non-conforming, but you were asking to expand the curb cut, which exacerbates a non-conforming.
We would be, we'd be perfectly happy to, to not have the curb cut if we had some kind of guarantee the city would stop issuing us tickets.
Yeah, I'm on a charge of BTD.
I know.
The issue with the curb cut is, again, it's, it's a pedestrian issue of, of having curb cuts, which allows more cars to come and go. And again, this is another situation where you're, you know, within five-minute walk to a MBTA station. And we are generally from.
We are fifteen-minute walk from a train station and it's a one-way street. It's not on a commuter path to get to the train station at all.
Can I ask, I'm sorry, can I ask a follow-up question? So just to clarify, do you currently have a curb cut that you are appropriately using for one, but, but you're using it for two spots versus one? So is the issue that you'd get, you're being cited because you're using it for two? Or just even when you're using it for one?
Well, the, the two, the two citations we've had so far, the photo we received with the citation had our car on the park, then didn't have the curb cut. So the, the two, we have two spaces. The curb cut only covers one of our spaces and then as well as the neighbor's driveway, those, that's where the curb cut is there. We, we had used the other space without the curb cut and we're getting tickets from, you know, in both times, we, we fought and we won in both cases.
One car? One, one car or with two cars?
One car. We want to be able to drive in and park anywhere, but we have to park right in front of the curb cut or we get a ticket.
They got, they got, they got the tickets because the car was parked in the space without the curb cut.
Yes, sir.
I'm trying to look for an alternative to your twenty-eight point five request, which is whether or not you just relocate it to the spot where you actually want your car.
Well, remember the twenty-eight point five is, that's our neighbors. That doesn't have to do with us. It's, it's in the middle of both of our properties. He has half of it and we have the other half.
Right.
So I think they want to park two cars.
I see.
Yep. We want to be able to have two cars parked there because we do have guests and we have people coming over. And while we only have one car, it's, we want to have the two. And, and again, not worry about getting that, that three hundred dollar surprise in the mail for something that was, you know, allowed use just without the curb cut.
Right. Even if we just moved over a little bit, our neighbors have been incredibly supportive because we have a problem in that this, across the street, very few people have driveways because it's up. So they can't have driveways and they feel that, you know, the more people that can park off of the street, then they can have a parking spot. Because across the street where there's parking, there's hardly any driveways because the land goes up.
Um, let's, let's have some public testimony first.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Dana Bronchuck. I'm with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, Roselandale liaison. These folks had flyered a butters within three hundred feet for two weeks. They connected with the Lower Washington South Street Neighborhood Group. We have received multiple letters of support and at this time, we defer judgment to the board.
Thank you.
Do have a raised hand here. One second. Steven?
Steve Gag, yes. I live at six thirty-one South Street. My name is Steve Gag. And I've lived here for thirty-seven years, raised my family here. I know Darlene and Owen. And I know they're. And I know their dilemma very well, because many people on our street have. Have gotten ticketed for the very same thing, although theirs is pretty unusual in that they. Have this curb cut, and then the neighbor has part of it as well. There's no parking on their side of the street, so the issue of parking, I understand, is not a problem, but. Taking up a parking spot, but this issue of pedestrian safety, I I understand that. They have one car, they very seldom have. A need for a second parking spot, I know them well enough to know that. So from a neighborhood perspective, and somebody who's been a leader in the Lower South Street Neighborhood Association for as many years as I've lived here. This is not a problem. Uh, I, and nobody should be getting a three hundred dollar ticket. For for this bizarre scenario that we have here with a curb cut being shared with the neighbor, so. Um, I would beg the, the committee here to look at this from a standpoint of. A a neighbor that's been very good to all of us here, and thank. Be be concerned about pedestrian safety, but I don't think we've got a a real major issue here on it, but, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gag.
Um, no additional raised hands.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Would like to hear either the BPDA or the BTD comments?
Uh, yeah, you can read them both into the record.
For BPD, for six, six forty-four South Street. And reference the BOA one four four two five seven five. Boston Planning and Development Agency recommends the. BTD. For six forty-four South Street, South Street is a one-way street that has no parking on the side. Also, there are many homes that already have front yard parking. Finally, the curb cut is already in place, BTD suggests approval with BPD.
All right, thank you. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
I would like to make a motion of approval with BTD and.
May I have a second?
I'll make a second.
Okay, with that, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes. Oh, you're on mute, Sherry.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I I have a giggling child in the background, I was trying to not, not, not offend you all. The chair also votes yes, the motion carries, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one zero three three eight five one. The address being thirty-five Rockwood Street. Is the applicant and or their representative president.
You've been on mute.
Uh, yes, good evening, Attorney David Click, on behalf of the applicant, or the homeowner, Julie Kuhn. I am just reaching out with regards to. This request for relief from a zoning code refusal letter. From, I believe it was on or about July of two thousand nineteen, in relation to an article fifty-five, section nine. A violation, which is maintaining a deck within ten feet of the rear setback. At my client's property, thirty-five Rockwood Street in JP. At this time, what you're looking at are, unfortunately, they are. Pre-dated plans of what's otherwise a pre-existing. A deck that's, with the exception of some nominal expansion due to. The inclusion of some composite materials onto the deck, which are shown on the architectural drawing here. That it it's been in existence since on or about nineteen seventy-six, nineteen seventy-seven. So, uh, what has occurred, though, is that there is a, an encroachment of, if you go up to the. The, um, the actual existing site plan that is on the slide above. Um, really, the only issue here is with regards to what you can see at the top. Um, the rear lot, which shows the deck. And it, it shows that it's encroaching over onto a direct of Butters' property at two Rockwood Terrace. There is a revised plan showing that, since the initiation of this appeal, there's since been an agreement between. The owner of two Rockwood Terrace and my client, to essentially have a land swap of thirty-five square feet. Between each, which that revised plan shows. I've submitted it, however, unfortunately, I was informed that. Uh, my submittals, which include the zoning code refusal letter, this pre-existing plan. The updated plan, as well as some historical photos and the architectural drawings, just wasn't provided in time. Um, for the hearing, so I just would ask for a deferral or a brief deferral date. In order to come back before the advisory board to further discuss the relief.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to defer.
I, thank you, I I I would state, we have gone before, had a butter, we actually had.
At that time, thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair, the next deferral date would be September twenty-first, which would be a subcommittee date.
Okay. All right, do I, do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries, see you then.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one four three one seven four zero. The address of eleven Prong Road Street. Is the applicant and or their representative president.
Good afternoon, Attorney Anthony Ross, three forty-three Belgrade Avenue in Roselandale. I'm appearing on behalf of the unit one owners, Alan Clark and Leta Calagritis. Um, unit one is the lower unit in the two-unit condominium. Uh, that was renovated and converted to a condominium in two thousand and twenty and twenty-one. Uh, at the end of the renovation process, just as the occupancy certificate was being issued. The building inspector noticed that finishing the part of the basement that belongs to unit one as a playroom, family room. Resulted in the FAR violation. Um, the finished basement area is connected to unit one by a dedicated stairway. Uh, the ceiling height and windows are all code compliant, the basement area is one large room with a bathroom. And a utility equipment closet and laundry, there are no closets for storage, and the basement will not be used as a bedroom. Uh, prior to finishing the basement at this property. Um, the FAR was point five four, slightly above the allowed FAR point five, point five oh. Uh, with the finished basement area, the living area of the building would increase by approximately six hundred and forty square feet. And result in an FAR of about point six five. Uh, this is not out of character for the area, as there are other properties on the street with similar FARs, or even greater. Um, there's no exterior work proposed, and respectfully, we do not consider the requested variances to present. Any intrusion to the neighborhood with surrounding community, and we would. Uh, ask that the variances be allowed so that Alan and Leta can make better use of their home.
Thank you, any questions from the board?
Um, can you talk about how do you access, is the, is the basement accessible? To the out, to the outside, or do you have to go up through the stair?
Uh, no, there is, the way the site slopes down towards the rear. Um, there's a walkout, so there's a couple steps up, and there's a full walkout, so you can go from the basement area to the rear yard. Up to the, the first living level of unit one.
Okay, and what's the, the ceiling height in that basement?
Uh, I do not know the exact ceiling height, but I know that it is code compliant, so I've been in there, I would say it's at least seven feet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, may we have public testimony?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Diana Bronczuk with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We held in a Butters' meeting on May twenty-second that only had one a butter attending. We connect, the project representative connected with the Longfellow Area Neighborhood Association that decided to not hear more on the project. I've received no letters of opposition nor support, at this time, we defer judgment to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm out here, we have no raised hands.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council, Glad to make a clarity, council, I can support.
Uh, with that, may I have a motion?
Um, I will make a motion to approve with. No building code relief.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one four seven two four one five. The address being three fifty-one Vermont Street. Is the applicant and or their representative president.
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge, hello, Madam Chair, members of board, my name is Attorney Justin Burns from Pluginea Norton. Business address, ten Forbes Road, Braintree, Massachusetts. I'm here on behalf of the owners of the property at three fifty-one Vermont, Alan and Ken Golden. Um, just for reference, the zoning in this district is one F six thousand, and the lot size of this specific lot is five thousand. The existing dwell, uh, five thousand square feet, I should say, the existing dwelling on this property is a two-family dwelling. Uh, this project is a proposal to construct an addition onto that existing two-family. Uh, the proposal will include a first-floor addition that will contain a mudroom, a rear entry for the first-floor unit. A handicap bathroom, a deck, and a handicap access ramp. Uh, the rest of the addition will include two second-floor decks and the construction of a third floor. Uh, which will be comprised comprised of four bedrooms, two bathrooms, and a balcony. Uh, the total size of this addition will be one thousand three hundred and ninety-two square feet. Which will bring the total, the total size of the structure to three thousand six hundred and fifty-four feet. Um, the reason for the changes on the first unit on first floor is, uh. The Goldens want to make it easier to access their home as they get older, hence the handicap bathroom and the handicap access ramp in order to get into the home. Uh, as for the changes to the second floor and the creation of a third floor, uh, the Goldens are seeking to have. Their son and their daughter-in-law move in with them with their three children. As currently constructed, the second-floor unit only has two bedrooms, so the expansion to a third floor to be able to move those two bedrooms up. The third floor and add an additional two to accommodate the family, uh, is necessary. Just to move us quickly through our violations, we were cited for max FAR, the required is point four, we're at point seven three. Uh, rear yard setback, the required is thirty feet, we are at twenty point two feet and twenty-nine point six feet. Uh, the side yard setback, which is required at ten point nine feet, we are at four point eleven. Uh, the maximum building height is two point five stories, we are at three stories, but I feel it's worth mentioning that. Maximum building height in feet is thirty-five feet, and we're at thirty-two point eight feet. Uh, and also usable open space, we are offering thirteen point one six, one, thirteen thousand sixteen, sorry. Apologize, thirteen hundred sixteen square feet per unit. Is the required number, and we're proposing, uh, one thousand one hundred ninety-eight square feet per year. We're also cited for off-street parking, the parking location. Uh, this property is located on the corner of Vermont Street and Francesca Street, so it technically has two front yards, one of Vermont, one of Francesca. Uh, the parking will not change as currently constructed, there are two parking spots on a existing curb cut coming off of Francesca Treat and Street. That's not changing, it's staying in the same spot, and also, we were cited for extension of a non-conforming use, as it's a two-family to one-family zone. Uh, just a quick note on the community process, we did a full community process.
We'll hear that from ONS, that's.
Apologize, well, in that case, I'll pause for a question.
Thank you, any questions from the board?
Um, can you go back to the basement plan, I don't see anything in the basement, is there any current use or proposed use of the basement?
Uh, I do not believe so, it's just, it's just the three floors that I referenced.
Okay. All right, no other questions?
Uh, with that, can we hear from ONS and anyone else on the public process?
Sorry to take your job away.
Justin, that's fine, please feel free, that's, that's welcome, but no, we had our, we had our Butters' meeting on June fourteenth. The Butters' neighbors had no opposition to this, the only questions they had were around the construction time. Um, which obviously, we can't figure out until, you know, the, when we we get through the ZBA, but. Um, we also had the West Roxton Neighborhood Council meeting on June twenty-seventh, this past unanimously, with that, we defer judgment to the board.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council, Glad to make a clarity. Uh, councilor was impressed with the public process, having known, uh, no, no opposition. The council elected one, recognized, uh, in support.
Thank you. Go to Courtney and then Kevin.
Hi, good evening, I'm Courtney Golden, I'm actually the daughter-in-law of Ken and Alan. Um, this is. The, the reason why we would like to do this is we would like.
I'm sorry, not, not to cut you off, but we we obviously know you're in support of it, we just want to hear from other Butters at this time. Kevin, are you in a butter?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Like Kevin Cullen, three fourteen Vermont Street, uh, we're directly across the street, and we are in support of this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no additional raised hands.
Excellent, uh, any, with that, may I have a motion?
Um, I'll make a motion to approve with, um. BPDA design review and no building code relief.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you very much, have a nice seat.
And next and last on the list, we have case BOA. One four seven six nine nine seven. Address of sixteen. Lyle?
Lyle, yeah.
Lyle Street, thank you. Uh, is the applicant and or their representative president?
Um, yep, and just to confirm, folks can hear me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, my name is Tom Byrne, along with my wife Jen, we're the owners of sixteen Lyle Street. Uh, we've lived in our home for almost four years now, and really love living in this neighborhood. Uh, my wife is a pediatric nurse practitioner at a local medical practice and takes care of many of the kids in the neighborhood. So we feel very much a part of this community and want to raise our children in this neighborhood. But with the growing family, just our feeling is that we need a little bit more space in our home. And so we're planning on pursuing a project that made the most sense, given the layout of our home. Which is to add dormers to the attic, to turn the attic into usable living space for us. Uh, we're also proposing to finish the basement, that, but that would be really just used as a laundry room and storage space. The basement, as it stands now, is sort of rus- roughly finished already, there's. Flooring and kind of deteriorate, there's some framed walls and deteriorating particle boards, so we'd sort of just be. Uh, refreshing that space and using it as storage and laundry. Um, we're not changing the footprint of the home at all. Um, and the relief that we're seeking is for an excessive floor area ratio, and exceeding the allowable number of stories. Um, I also just want to note that the work to the attic would raise the height of the home by about one foot to twenty-seven point five. Feet, which is still well below, uh, what we're zoned for here in this district. Um, I also just want to note that the dormers that we're proposing to the attic are very much consistent with the character of the neighborhood. Um, many of the other homes in the neighborhood, including our closest to butter at seventy Duenell Street, have highly similar dormers. Um, and prior to this meeting, I had shared with the board, um, photos and sort of a map of a budding properties that have similar dormers. Um, so with that, I thank the board for their time, and welcome any questions about this project that Jen and I could answer.
Thank you, Mr. Burns, any questions from the board?
Um, and so that you're not intending to use the basement as living space?
No, I know that it does say that on the original permit application, which was filed by the contractor, but it's really just. As I said, there's sort of flooring in there, and so it would just sort of be essentially replacing the sheet rock and replacing. Um, part of the flooring and the laundry room, but the plan is really just to use it as storage and a laundry room.
Okay, thank you, I think the proposed changes are pretty nominal.
Any other questions? Chair, none, can I, can we have public testimony?
Yep, hi folks, Dan Hudson from ONS here, we had our Butters' meeting on June eighth, this was also presented at the June twenty-seventh. Yep. Bye, folks. Dan Hudson from ONS here. Uh, we had our Butters meeting on June eighth. This was also presented at the June twenty-seventh uh, West Roxton Neighborhood Council meeting. Neighbors had no questions. They were in support. We defer judgment to the board.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council, Gladys Michael Flaherty, Councilor, Record, Support.
And Madam Chair, we have no raised hands. With that, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval with no building code relief and BPTA design review.
Okay, uh, may I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, members and staff. See you next time.
All right, thank you.